I would like to welcome you all to the February 8th, 2016 City of Fayetteville Planning Commission meeting. Excuse me. I'd like to encourage everyone to turn their cellphones to silent, and if any member of the audience would like a listening device, staff will gladly provide one for you. Mr. Garner, would you please call for a roll?
Chester?
Here.
Bunch?
Here.
Noble?
Here.
Cook?
Present.
Hoskins?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
Autry?
Here.
Hoffman?
Here.
Thank you. We have a couple of items on our consent agenda, first being the approval of the minutes from the January 25th, 2016 meeting, and the second being PPL 155295, preliminary plat north of Crooked Stickway, Batris Loop.
Albatross.
Oh, excuse me. Oh, I'm sorry, sorry. Albatross Loop Batris. Albatross Loop Homes at the Links. Would anybody like to, would any member of the commission like to pull one of those for further comment?
Oh, Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion to approve the consent agenda made by Commissioner Cook, a second by Commissioner Chester. Mr. Garner, would you please call the roll?
Chester?
Yes.
Bunch?
Yes.
Noble?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Autry?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. We have no old business, but our first item of new business is VAR. Yeah, I think there is. You have to read your paper agenda.
Oh, yeah. It was wrong on the original flat one.
Oh, thank you. We do have old business after all. We have, our first item of old business is rezone, okay, rezone 155293 for 701 East Huntsville Road, Rose Bauer. And Mr. Thompson, would you please give us the staff report on that?
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair, yes. The subject property is a 67-acre parcel located on the southeast corner of, southeast corner of Morningside and Huntsville Roads. The parcel is currently zoned RSF4, and tonight, we're going to discuss approximately half the property, about 36 acres, that the applicant has requested to be rezoned into three separate zones, from RSF4 to almost three acres of CS, 31 acres approximately of NC, that's neighborhood conservation, and just over two acres of RA, residential agricultural. In order to develop this with some medium-city, single-family housing, is my understanding. The reason for the RA here is the applicant is proposing to conserve essentially a riparian corridor. There's a, there are a series of creeks, or creeks and little ponds that travel north to south from this property, and that residential agricultural zone would limit the use of that property, subject to a bill of assurance that I believe is on your desk there, that would further limit the uses that would be available on that property. We have received a little bit of public comment on this, but mostly just questions. I do have one letter in here, but that is from an older version, and I contacted that commenter, and had, he had no interest in further commenting on this particular final rezoning request. In terms of land use compatibility, staff feels the proposed zoning is generally compatible with the surrounding residences and limited residential institutional uses, senior housing, et cetera. The zoning is essentially, well, NC is about 10 units per acre, and if you look in that area, they are smaller houses on smaller lots. That has been the pattern down in this part of Fayetteville for a number of years. We also like this, this density because it is less than, less than a mile from where we're sitting right now. It is really inside downtown Fayetteville, unusually large piece for so close to downtown. We do feel this would be appropriate, just given everything that's around it, and the opportunity to push up the density also works well, and is generally compatible with our future land use map, that most of the area is designated as a city neighborhood area. That's calling for all manner of, or wide range of, commercial and residential uses from single-family to multifamily with some commercial in there as well. So this does fit quite well with that. There is an area that is designated as natural area. That area has in part been incorporated into the RA portion of the request, to essentially, again, conserve that natural area stuff in which, portion in which no or very limited development is considered appropriate by the City Plan 2030. With that, I would like to recommend that the Planning Commission approve this rezoning tonight. If you have questions.
Thank you very much. Is the applicant present? Are you the applicant?
No, ma'am, I'm just in the neighborhood.
Well, then, we need to take the applicant first, and then I'll open the floor to public comment, and I'll call you back up. Please state your name for the record.
My name is Bart Bauer.
Do you have anything you'd like to add to this?
No, I agree with what Lynn said about it, and how we're going to keep, like I said, we'll be keeping that, the natural area in there, and I usually, I do nice entrances, and I run a real strong POA, and we have a good builders group there. I've done quite a few things in Bentonville, like Lockmore Club and Woods Creek and such, and so I think I'm a pretty good developer to take care of the projects here, to make sure they, we, I like to have a strong POA. I don't want to walk away someday and have the place look bad. So I'll enforce a POA, and I'll be very strict about it.
Okay. Thank you very much. If we have any additional questions, we'll call you up. I'll open the floor to public comment now. Is there any member of the public that would like to address this item?
Yes, ma'am. My name's Chris McGill, and I live at 937 Morningside, and a couple of things I, my neighbors that wanted me to say tonight, it's just, we're not opposed to any type of development over there. We've been, had 18 years of looking out and watching the sunset, so what we were, I just wanted to kind of convey is the neighborhood, is to try to match it up as best as possible with what is already there, and if you'll look on the kind of southwest side down there where Nantucket is, I know Mr. Bauer, some of his places are kind of, you know, garage on bottom, and go up a couple, about three stories, and that's kind of what's down there, and I could see him even building something down there on north where you see McClinton up in there. It's all a single family, and that's all we were wanting to be able to see, is something across the street, not just going up, and keeping Morningside Drive kind of Morningside Drive. Thanks.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there any other public comment on that? Seeing none, I close the floor to public comment now and bring it back to the commissioners.
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Chester?
Just to sort of address the member of the public's comment, any, anybody who wants to take this one, I guess Andrew would be the right person to ask. There's no difference in height limits in RSF4 and NC, is there? It's the same?
It's correct. It's 45 feet.
Okay, so wouldn't, any kind of residential, 45 feet's the limit, so it wouldn't matter. Of course, I'll just go ahead and, having clarified that, say, I would like to see more NC generally. I think that that's the kind of density that we need to be sort of transitioning towards, if not higher. I like the fact that there's some commercial nearby, so there's a walkable aspect, and there's even sort of a protection of the creek area that's in there with the RA. I have no problem with this, so, thank you, Madam Chair.
I have a question for Mr. Thompson. Is, now, I'm looking at this, the rezone exhibit, is, now, the RA is just, just right along the creek, isn't it? I can't tell how.
It is, and I, unfortunately, I'm not exactly sure which exhibit you're looking at. I hope it's, yeah, that's correct. It's the yellow.
Yeah.
So it does follow the creek, and then towards the bottom portion, it does incorporate that natural area, at least a good bit of it, that is part of the future land use map. So if you kind of could imagine, flip back and forth and see the future land use along with that exhibit, then you'll see that, you know, they line up.
Okay. Do you have any idea how wide this is?
The property?
No, the, just that, the RA area.
You know, I.
I was just wondering.
It's about 60 feet wide.
Okay.
It gets a little bit wider in some places. You can see where the, where there's actually some small ponds. It kind of gets out wider to include those.
All right, thank you. That's all I have. Mr. Hoffman, you had some questions?
Yes, ma'am. Actually, I have a question for the applicant. If you don't mind stepping back up. I'm always, I'm always definitely one of the people that sits up here and talks about the importance and need of putting commercial, limited commercial in developments like this, particularly in walkable developments like neighborhood conservation. I'm a little bit skeptical, however, of the community services. I think that that, you know, can be a little bit heavier than might be appropriate for this neighborhood, and I'm just wondering, what exactly are you wanting to put there?
I'd like to restore the house and rent it out as a doctor's office, or dentist's office, or chiropractor, something of that nature. Me and my wife first looked at it, to do the house as a hobby, to restore it. So, once we restore it, we think because of commercial use, we're going to look to get a tenant, a professional tenant, and leave it as is for now till, you know, once the area builds up, it could go to something else, but the house is in very good shape. The stone is phenomenal, and as of right now, our plans are to restore the house and do in addition to it, and have it be some sort of professional office preferably.
Okay. Mr. Garner, the use that the applicant just described, is it safe to say that that would, that would work very well in a neighborhood services zoning instead of a community services zoning?
It depends on the square footage. There's a cap in the neighborhood services. The maximum square footage in a building in neighborhood services is 3,000 square feet, so it's actually can be, it depends on what the applicant.
He's describing an existing building, right?
Yeah, I don't know.
As of for now, we don't, I don't have a thing set in stone, but right now, we're going to advertise to just restore the building, and we'll have to expand because it's not very big. It's maybe, I don't know what it is, maybe 1,400 square feet on the bottom floor, and like a 300 square feet that's real bizarre upstairs above it.
Did you, just out of curiosity, did you evaluate neighborhood services for this plot instead of the community services?
No, I did not.
You didn't? Okay.
No, I didn't.
It's, my concern, I mean, I'm just looking, you look at the permitted uses on community services, one of the things that is allowed there would be gasoline service stations, and drive-in, and drive-through restaurants, and, you know, I'm actually a resident, full disclosure, I'm actually a resident of the neighborhood, and I, I just have a hard time seeing a gas station or a drive-in restaurant.
Yeah, I don't think they, yeah, you know, I do quite a bit of real estate. That would probably be my client there. I don't think that'd make, you don't think it's a good spot? I don't, and I don't think they would either.
Well, the, what we have to do is, we have to kind of look at the worst-case scenario for the zoning. We have to kind of think of this as if you were to just sell it, and then the zoning remains in place, and then whoever comes in that doesn't necessarily have your motives and, you know, what could they potentially do? So, I guess my point is, you know, if it's, if it's possible for you to do what you want to do with neighborhood services instead of community services, then maybe it would be more appropriate for us to zone that neighborhood services. That way, you still get to do what you want, and we don't have the possibility of a, of a gas station there in the future.
Yeah, I, like I say, not knowing what that is now, because I went to zone it for city services, I can't answer.
Sure.
I can't answer the question. I, I don't see a gas station going in there, you know, on Arby's or something, they're just not in the location that they would put them, so I'm not really, but I don't know what it would maybe limit me to of something else that I would do. I don't know, you know, so it's kind of on the spot, you know?
Yeah, I know, I'm not trying to put you on the spot.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm just trying to figure out what you're wanting to do.
Well, as of right now.
I think that actually, maybe neighborhood services might actually be more appropriate for what you're wanting to do, and, and, you know, could help protect the value of the neighborhood that you're going to create as well, which I think is important. And honestly, I mean, I really like community services. I think it's one of our strongest, strongest zoning districts in certain situations, but just given, given the current scale of this neighborhood, the size of the dwellings, the size of the houses, and the way that it all works, I just, my gut feeling is that neighborhood services would be more appropriate for this. Thank you, madam.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson, do you know, okay, so, so what would the east, what would the right-of-way be for Huntsville, it's not, it's not Highway 16 through there, it's Huntsville Road, right?
No.
Morningside Drive. So how much would that pare down that lot by the time you figure in the right-of-way? I think it's.
Not a great deal, and I'll go back to my infrastructure, and I can tell you exactly. Just to remind myself, I think those are both collectors. They are. Those would have 80s, not 87 feet.
59 feet.
59 feet, thank you, of right-of-way. I'm not exactly sure what's there right now, but I think there is some.
You know, we just built sidewalks along there, so I imagine that it's pretty stable on the south side of Huntsville.
Certainly. Yeah, I think we, we did talk about that, Mr. Bauer and I, but I don't anticipate that being significant change to that, that three-acre parcel. Madam Chair?
Yeah, the one thing you might look at as well is, depending on the nature of development, you might want to turn lane at this spot, so you would go from 59 feet to 70 feet to allow for a turn lane in the middle, depending on if it was warranted, depending on what ended up happening at that corner, you know, if there ended up being a traffic signal at some point in a small convenience store or a coffee shop, and some multifamily above it, or something like that, which would be, community services would allow those kinds of vertical mixed use. You could potentially look at a turn lane there, it would, so the right-of-way would be not substantially greater. It's not an arterial road. I mean, I think a few years ago, when it was state highway, we maybe had that classified as a higher grade of road, but at this point, it's just a collector's street.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Brown?
I like the proposed zoning that you have, except for that issue of community services zone. I also agree that it's, I think neighborhood service would be more appropriate. The community service would be better located in a place like the intersection of Highway 16 and Highway 265, which is set up as a commercial area, and that's where the grocery stores will go, would go, and filling stations, and, and large restaurant-type establishments. But in the area, in this area, I think the neighborhood service is more appropriate so that it provides a service that's oriented to just the people in the neighborhood, and less, you know, oriented towards a regional flow of traffic.
Can I ask one question, ma'am? Is it, because you said that, Quinn, can I still put, because we thought maybe possibly a coffee shop in the stone house like that, would that still be a usable service if I changed it?
Yes.
Again, it just depends on the square footage of the building. If it, if it's 3,000 square feet and above, you could not do any non-residential in it, so I don't know how big it is, or how big your expansion is. So that's, there's actually a little bit of a gap, I think, in our zoning code there, because it goes from, you know, neighborhood services is really, 3,000 square feet is about the size of a fairly large house, but if you do that, if you had the footprint of a house, 3,000 square feet, but then you wanted to do an apartment above it, so you had retail on the bottom and apartment above it, then you're talking about a 6,000-square-foot building. So I think that's kind of why in some of these cases, where you're really trying to do kind of a corner neighborhood store, maybe vertical mixed use, it bumps you up to the community services zoning designation. So we actually have been working on kind of an intermediate, or we've been talking about creating another zoning district in between neighborhood services and community services for some of these cases like this. And, you know, and it's, and this is really not unexpected. I mean, when you're planning a city, when you're coming up with zoning, this is not, you know, you're not just a sledgehammer with the zoning code. We're taking out really a fine scaffold, and you're really, you know, you're the, you're planning exactly the type of development that would be appropriate for that neighborhood. So, from the city planning staff, we did recommend community services because we do feel like there's potential for some, a little bit higher intense commercial areas on this commercial, maybe some vertical mixed use, and the 3,000 square foot is fairly limiting. I mean, you're talking, just using the existing house basically as is, you might not be able to add on to it, and I think because of the size, the limitation of it, you're not talking five acres, you're talking about two acres, so that you might be able to do a gas station, but come and go is typically double that size in acreage. So I think the, if you did a gas station, you might get four pumps, as opposed to the typical 16 pump. So I think it's also the scale of the property was part of our recommendation, is that it's kind of self-limiting in that factor.
I have no problem with, with what the applicant is asking for. I think community services would maybe give you a little more option if you, if you do want to put an office and maybe a coffee shop or something like that there. I think that would be appropriate there, so I'm in favor of it.
Yeah, we even had a tennis club come to us and looked at it a little bit about putting a pretty good size into our tennis facility.
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Brown?
Could I ask a question of the staff?
Yes, please.
With the size of the lot, is it possible to have more than one structure on it?
You could.
So you could have, you could get an additional 3,000?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so you could just put it in a different, another structure?
I will.
But you still have the 3,000.
Yeah, 3,000 doesn't do you much good for some, some things, it's just, like you say, it's just a large house.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
I will point out, when the city sold some land to Come and Go from the Tyson property, it was under two acres for their facility down there, and here it looks like that they're asking for 2.87 acres for community services. So certainly many things, not with that house sale on it, but if the house is gone, many, many things could go on to that corner lot. I think you also abut, your property also abuts down to Highway 16, 15th Street, is that?
No, I don't, I am only buying half of it.
Oh, okay, but anyway, this field does. It goes already down there, and that corner is, would be even more likely for a CS sort of designation. Five-lane road, stoplight already, church across the street, and industrial park on the other side, so you don't have the single-family homes in the neighborhood that the more intensive commercial use might impact.
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Hoffman?
Yeah, I, I actually, we're talking about the 3,000 square foot, is that, you know, is that good, is that bad? I think that's good. I think that the, probably, I wasn't, I didn't draft that code, but I think that you could interpret the intention, the intention of a, of a limit like that, to say that, you know, really, in a neighborhood services zone, we're just looking for businesses that come in at roughly the same or a similar scale to the housing that they abut, and I think that's a really important concept in a neighborhood like this, where, again, you do have such small footprint housing. To me, I mean, I'd like to see, I'd love to see a coffee shop come into this location. I think it'd do really well, but, you know, a small coffee shop like that, you're talking about a business that directly serves the neighborhood that it's in, versus a business that comes in over 3,000 square foot. That's, that's the kind of business that's going to have more of a, kind of a broader draw, you know, it's going to, that's going to draw from multiple neighborhoods, from, you know, more parts of the city, and I, just completely honestly, I just don't think that's appropriate at this corner.
Commissioner Chester?
Well, I find myself in the unusual circumstances, disagreeing with Commissioner Hoffman, but probably because I was sort of thinking that there needed to be something in between neighborhood services and community services, possibly, as Commissioner, or as Mr. Garner has already talked about. I guess I feel like, Andrew, is there any way you could, I was trying to find the neighborhood services allowed uses. Do you happen to have that to hand? Is that something you could?
If you want to, I could probably pull it up here on the screen.
Oh, you've got it. Now, this isn't, oh, okay. So, under the conditional uses, are they still limited to 3,000 square feet, Andrew?
I can't recall. I believe, I believe that limited business, Use Unit 12 is permitted by right. Is that correct?
Correct. It's a permitted use, but under conditional uses, cultural and recreational facilities, government facilities, eating places, neighborhood shopping goods, commercial recreation, small sites, in fact, many of the things that are normally allowed by right in commercial services. My question would be, there's, doesn't appear immediately to be a limitation on size, but I'm wondering if the Unit 12, 3,000 square feet is overriding in that case?
Well, the, yeah, so I think in order to go greater than 3,000 square feet and have a commercial, you would have to have Use Unit 15, which is neighborhood shopping, and that's.
I have that.
Is it in there?
In conditional use.
Okay, so then you could do a conditional use for neighborhood shopping.
Okay, so then that case, could we get to some of the things you were talking about, about the vertical?
Yeah, they, once you go to Use Unit 15, that allows up to 25,000 square feet in commercial square footage.
Okay, but that would simply be a conditional use at that point, and we would get to make that determination.
Yeah.
Okay, in that case, I'm leaning back towards agreement then. I was going to make a couple of cases. There's a, there are a few instances, now, it's 2016, not 1942, but there are a couple of little two-pump old gas stations that aren't operational anymore, but over near the historic district on corners. You know, and I know you're laughing, but a neighborhood service station kind of thing, I can totally see working in a kind of urban, walkable environment. Maybe not so, I mean, there's an Easy Mart still operating across from multifamily off of, I think, Poplar, corner of Poplar and Leverett, maybe, which I think is appropriate. I don't, you're saying the come and go, counsel, you're saying the come and go that the city sold land for is, is about this size lot, 2.7?
Yeah, it was about two acres. We, and then we have another developable lot there that's slightly under two acres that would be appropriate for lots of C2 uses.
Okay. Well, I mean, not that I think that that's appropriate urban fabric type of gas station, but I'm assuming that in neighborhood services, there would be, I mean, there are some build-to's, build-to rules and stuff they would have to follow, right? You wouldn't be a typical come and go there if they built one there, for example.
That's, under neighborhood services, you would never be able to do.
Would never be able to do that. Oh, no, I'm sorry, under community services.
Oh, yes, you could.
Would you, would you be able to build, isn't there a build-to zone in commercial?
That's correct. We have specific design standards for gas stations and urban zoning districts, so.
Right, so, I mean, I guess I can imagine the possibility of a, of a gas station if it was an urban-formed gas station working there. However, given that there are the conditional uses available under neighborhood services to let us to expand on this a little bit, maybe, maybe that is the appropriate zoning. So I suppose, while I'm leaning towards a little more intensity, I suppose I could be swayed, but I feel like the applicant should have a chance to reexamine this if he wanted. swayed, but I feel like the applicant should have a chance to reexamine this if he wants to. And so, normally in these kinds of cases, I ask an applicant, how much of a hurry are you in?
Pretty much.
Pretty much? So, you don't want to be tabled?
Right now, a few weeks and we have to, yeah.
So, you wouldn't want to be tabled tonight to reexamine it?
I don't think so right now. I don't.
The final decision comes at city council level, so you'll have plenty of time before it gets to city council to look at that and see whether or not that.
If I, you know, if I could make it work, you know, but like you say, right now, I knew what I was getting to, and I talked to the planners, and we talked it over and thought this was the way to go, so.
Well, I'll say that I'm not, I'm not necessarily against commercial services, but I don't live right next to this, but I am familiar with the narrowness and crankingness of the streets. What I will say is this, under neighbor services, it sounds to me like you'd be able to do the kinds of things you want to do under a conditional use. And what that would entail would be coming back to this body and saying, hey, this is what I want to do, and then we could allow that. But that would still give the protection that I think Commissioner Hoffman's concerned about. If you sell this property and it goes on to someone else, commercial services would allow them to simply develop it without, by right, without us being able to say yea or nay to maybe a wider variety of things that some of the people up here are comfortable with. And we saw a case like this recently with some sort of tall buildings going in next to some residential, so I think that's part of the concern. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
When you all get to the point, if there is, I think that you need to, there needs to be either a motion to amend or not, but if there is a motion to amend, then a final vote on whatever you all agree to so that you can have a recommendation go on to city council.
So, actually, Madam Chair, I didn't hear any problems with the neighborhood conservation and the agricultural portions. I wonder if this would be appropriate to vote on those portions? No?
You need, why don't you have a single vote at the end for your recommendation?
We've done that before. Haven't we? Split them?
You probably need to, like, when you can't necessarily agree on a condition of approval, usually you have a vote on the condition of approval, and then you have a vote on the final item. And, you know, you can register your disagreement. If you don't, you know, if a commissioner doesn't like one zone or another, then it'll be in the minutes that you didn't like that, and so that that was your recommendation on that particular item. But at the end, you probably ought to have a, just recommend to send this thing forward to the city council with your recommendations, noting that the records will show if there's a motion to amend, whether it passed or not.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Hoskins.
Just on a hard corner on, I guess, Sensible Road and Morningside Drive, the 2.87 acres is too small of a scale to do anything very intense on that property. I don't have any problem with the community services.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I guess I'll say something. I'm okay with community services. I mean, I certainly understand what Commissioner Hoffman's talking about, but, I mean, I just, I personally don't think the metrics are there for that kind of commercial use, but, and I would just be glad to have a little bit of commercial in this spot to mix in with the residential that's around there. So, I mean, I personally don't have an issue with community services either.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Yeah, I certainly appreciate everybody's comments. You know, I don't think that we have any kind of disagreement as far as the fact that we'd all like to see some amount of commercial there. I think we're all completely on board with that. And in fact, you know, even to Commissioner Chesser's comments about, you know, the possibility of coming in here and looking for a conditional use for something like a vertical mixed-use building, I mean, I would, I can't imagine that you would have any difficulty with any favorable planning commission that I've known for the last five or six years in getting something like that through. However, I can't imagine that there's a lot of people, both in the neighborhood and probably on this commission, that would have a very robust conversation about whether or not a gas station will be appropriate, or whether or not some of the other things that are uses by right in community services are actually appropriate in the neighborhood that's at this scale. So, what I want to do, Mr. Williams, it sounds like I need to make a motion to amend the current, and then we'll vote on that, and then after that, we'll vote on the full, okay. Yeah, so then I'm going to move that we amend RZN 15-5293 to substitute neighborhood services for community services in tract one, which is 2.87, is that 8.7 or 6.7 acres? 8.7 acres.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to amend this particular item, made by Commissioner Hoffman, and a second by Commissioner Brown. Mr. Garner, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. No.
Bunch?
No.
Noble?
No.
Cook?
No.
Hoskins?
No.
Brown?
Yes.
Autry?
No.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Selby?
No.
Motion fails.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Chesser.
In that case, I guess I'm going to move that we forward rezon 15-5293 to the city council with a recommendation of approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to forward this item on to the city council, made by Commissioner Chesser, and a second made by Commissioner Autry. Mr. Garner, would you please call the roll?
Chesser?
Yes.
Bunch?
Yes.
Noble?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Brown?
No.
Autry?
Yes.
Hoffman?
No.
Selby?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, on to our first item of new business, which is VAR 165321, variance for 4030 North College Avenue, Whataburger. And Mr. Thompson, would you please give us the staff report on that?
Yes, thank you. This property is located on southeast, excuse me, the northeast corner of College Avenue and Joyce Boulevard. It's the new Whataburger site. It's approximately 0.97 acres. The applicant is under construction at this time. Many of us have probably seen that building going up rather quickly. The applicant is here tonight to request a variance of a landscape code that requires a five-foot buffer on a side property line. On this particular property, there's a large office building just to the north, and these properties are separated by a tall retaining wall. This is the area that, in which the applicant would like to build a drive-through, and they need just a little bit more space to do a double drive-through. I think that's largely based on the amount of traffic they've seen and the popularity of their restaurants down on Martin Luther King. At least in recent months was the, I understand it, the highest grossing Whataburger in North America, surprising to everyone. So, you know, I think they're planning for this high, as you say, robust business on North College. And one way to do that is to provide a double drive-through here. This would reduce the landscape buffer to three feet rather than five, so they need an extra, an extra two feet here. And in staff's opinion, written by our landscape administrator, this five-foot buffer here is not necessarily acting the way that the buffer was intended to do because of that retaining wall, in part because the properties are so much higher and lower than the others. So, at least in part for that reason, the urban forester, excuse me, landscape administrator said, do recommend in favor of this ordinance, or excuse me, this ordinance variance with a condition of approval that would require determination of that variance, section 17704, for that five-foot landscape buffer to be reduced. Again, recommending in favor with a couple of points that the five-foot landscape buffer would only be reduced in the locations identified in their exhibit, and that the remaining three feet of landscape buffer along the northern wall would be planted with climbing vines to create a green wall, also as proposed by the applicant. I would direct any questions to Mr. Scott.
Okay. Sorry. I was like, Mr. Scott, who's Mr. Scott? Mr. Scott, you're the applicant, right? Oh, no, you're not. You're, sorry, you're the urban forester. So, do you have any?
No, we recommend approval of this. The applicants, they were more than willing to work with us on the green wall. They've even taken what they had originally planned and planted on-site and kept the number of mitigation that they were required and kept the landscape materials that they were going to use as a buffer.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Scott while he's up here? Okay. Thank you very much. Is there any member of the public that would? Is the applicant present? Sorry.
My name is Ronald Watkins on behalf of Craft and Toll. I would just like to add that in addition to the ivy along the wall, we are adding additional shrubs along the northeastern edge and the northwestern edges of the property to obscure the view of that wall there. We read through the memo, and we are in agreement with all of the conditions of approval. And I can answer any questions you all may have.
Okay. Thank you very much. If we have any additional questions, we'll call you back up. Thank you. So, any member of the public that would like to discuss this item? Seeing none, I close the floor to public comment and bring it back to the commissioners.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Autry.
I would tend to agree with this variance. I have a feeling that the, this may be the second highest grossing Whataburger in North America due to the location, excellent location, and I think just from the pure volume of potential traffic they'll have there and the additional space you need, I think the overriding thing is safety, not having a lot of cars, vehicles stacked up, either home Joyce or any other access into the city. So, I would be in favor of this variance, especially with what they're trying to do to mitigate the retaining wall, which we're not real all fond of, and in agreement with our urban forester.
Thank you. Commissioner Hoskins.
I have a question for the applicant.
Okay.
I'm just curious about something. Down on Sixth Street, you guys came in later wanting the double drive-through or what have you, whenever you were building this one down here on Martin Luther King. Okay? And up here on North College, you've got a double lot up there, and you guys are the engineering company. I'm just kind of curious of why you guys didn't foresee this and just moved that building a couple of feet south.
In the initial design process, we had the five-foot landscaped area, we had a 20-foot wide drive-through, and just south of the building, we had a 24-foot wide drive aisle. But because of their delivery truck and the ability to maneuver through the site, they needed additional room, Whataburger needed additional room for the delivery truck. And so, in order to get the 30 feet in the front, we adjusted the building to have 18 in the rear for the drive-through. And that change was approved in the planning commission, and the change went unnoticed until shortly after construction started. So, fast forward to today, and that's why we're here.
Okay. I guess I still don't understand, since you've got that double lot, it seems like there's plenty of space in the south to just shift everything south a couple of feet, but it's irrelevant at this point, though. Thanks.
Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Chesser.
I agree that the change in elevation will serve the spirit, if not letter, of the buffer requirements, and therefore, I'm going to move that we approve variance 16-5321 with staff recommendations of approval.
Second. Okay, we have a motion made to approve by Commissioner Chesser and a second made by Commissioner Selby. Mr. Garner, would you please call the roll?
Chesser?
Yes.
Bunch?
Yes.
Noble?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Autry?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Our next item is LSD 165302, large-scale development for 1740 West MLK Boulevard, Raising Canes. Mr. Foulter, would you give us the staff report on that, sir?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is an overall property of just under two acres. This was developed, the JD China Restaurant, maybe 20 years ago or so, and the north third of the site was platted into a tree preservation easement there along Mitchell Avenue, and the remainder of the property was developed with that restaurant. The applicant, Raising Canes, has a contract to purchase just over one acre from the current property owners of JD China. Essentially, it breaks down to the area south of the tree preservation land. That is enough area for them to develop their restaurant and parking areas, and really boils down to whether they want to purchase the tree preservation area or not, and that's what they've negotiated with the current landowners, not to purchase that tree preservation area. City attorney has provided a memo, I did share that with the applicants for Raising Canes this afternoon as well, and there's still a number of things going on that we're discussing internally with staff and city attorney's office in regards to the lot split application. The lot split application really does not impact the large-scale development. The applicant's proposal tonight is showing that they can develop a new restaurant, a new parking lot on the southern one acre of property. The tree preservation easement is not being impacted. It's just a matter of whether they can buy one acre from the applicant or whether they have to buy the entire lot from the applicant. That is because they can't split the lot because of a legal reason to do so, or they just don't buy the property at all. So, the lot split, while it is an ongoing matter, it is a very important matter for the applicants. It really doesn't impact the large scale. So, you may be unsure a little bit about some of the information and may choose to table it, the large-scale development tonight, but overall, the large scale can be approved. It's just a matter of whether the lot split can be approved and how the applicant handles that with the current property owners. The applicants are requesting a 3,500-square-foot restaurant, 36 parking spaces. They'd essentially remove all the existing parking and building and reconstruct on the existing site. There's no existing detention or drainage facilities on this property as it was constructed prior to those requirements, so they'll be actually increasing the amount of green space, but there will be no change to the detention requirements. There's an existing cross-access to the west, that will be maintained. There was some discussion at subdivision committee in regards to a stubout to the east or a cross-access to the east to an existing restaurant site. There is not one there currently, and we recommended they install one. From my last conversation with them, they said that they were fine with installing that cross-access. At this point, it'll just be for the ability for someone in the future to make that connection. There's green space that runs all the way over to the Burger King parking lot to the east, and so this stubout will just be constructed to the property line, so there'll still be green space. If that property's redeveloped in the future, they would have the opportunity to make that connection, and the planning commission could look at that connection in the future as well. At this point, staff is recommending approval of the large-scale development. There are two findings to be made by the planning commission. One is determination of commercial design standards. Staff recommends in favor finding the elevations do meet all the minimum design standards. And item two, determination of cross-connection to the east, and staff is recommending that that cross-drive stubout to the east property line be constructed for this project, and does appear that the applicants are on board with that as well. All the other conditions are standard conditions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is the applicant present?
Thomas Murphy, I'm with CSRS.
Okay.
We represent Raising Canes.
Okay. Mr. Murphy, do you have anything to add to that or?
No. The lot split issue is sort of something that's come about very recently, and from laying out the easement of the tree preservation, there is a buildable area between the new property division and the tree easement, and it is halfway compliant with the codes of your city, and so I think there's a discussion being had with vacating the easement or allowing a driveway or some sort, because you can build about a 3,500-square-foot house on the buildable easement, buildable area with the easement. So, but it's, you can approach it because the tree easement blocks the buildable area. So, I think we're still in discussion with the city about it, but with vacating the easement, then the lot complies with all of your zoning codes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We'll call you back up if we have any questions. Is there any member of the public that would like to address this item? Seeing none, I close the floor to public comment and bring it back. Oh, I'm sorry.
Lou Erin McCormick with Raising Cane's. And I just wanted to add to Mr. Murphy as far as the purchase of the additional lot back there. Our internal committee, we, they approved to do this lot so it would meet our numbers so we could be a successful part of the community, but also that we could give back to the community, which is really big on our part. So, the numbers that we have, it would be more expensive for us to buy the additional lot so it doesn't work out the same anymore.
Okay. Thank you very much. Is there any more public comment? Seeing none, I close the floor to public comment and bring it back to the commissioners.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Chesser.
Well, first, I would argue that that wasn't public comment. I think that's part of the applicant's team, I would argue, but...
That's okay. They can tell.
That's okay.
No, I know. I was saying, wanted that on the record. We saw this at subdivision committee. We talked about it at Agenda. Andrew, or who's item, whoever wants to answer this, I don't know if it would be the person who has the item or Andrew, although I suspect it's Andrew. There's no way to get to that buildable area, is there, without putting it? I mean, I know that they said there might be some possible way, but this would turn this into a tandem lot at that point, wouldn't it? There's no way to approach the buildable area from the street frontage that that lot possesses? Am I correct?
That's correct, I think.
Yeah, the easement, you could not build a driveway from Mitchell Street South without going through the tree easement. You would have to come through the Raising Cane's property to get to the area that is buildable.
Right. But, so, what I want to know is how does that work in towards of, in terms of? This is a very unusual case in that case because it technically has the street frontage, but not the access.
You do have a memo here from the city attorney.
No, I saw that.
So, I think we might want to give an opportunity for the city attorney to discuss the topic as well.
Okay. Well, I'd, I'd love to hear what he would say.
I would like to hear what he has to say. I've read his memo.
I guess, let me go ahead and say that I have no problem with the LSD in and of itself. And I know you said we could vote on that by itself. My question is, is will we see the lot split again or if we approve the LSD, will that go somewhere else? Because I would not be willing to approve this LSD if the lot split issue is not taken care of.
The lot splits are approved administratively. They just go through, do they meet the minimum zoning requirements? That's all we're reviewing a lot split for. I think what the city attorney is saying here is that in his reading of, of the development code, that the lot split should not be approved because it does not have buildable area. Again, the large-scale development is meeting all the codes. It's just a matter of do they have to buy the full two acres if they want to build this or are they allowed to buy 1.09 acres? And that's really a matter that they have to deal with with the property owner once, I think, staff and the city attorney have come to a decision on the lot split. So, again, yeah, if there's, if there's uncertainty about it, feel free to table it, but the large scale isn't dependent on the lot split. It's the sale of the properties if it's not a lot split.
Okay. I got it. So, in that case, Madam Chair, I would love to hear the, I mean, I've read the memo too and it seems to me that the memo says the lot split should be denied. Am I reading that incorrectly?
It says it...
Unless the city council is willing to vacate some of the tree preservation area, which only the city council can do, the city council could potentially give them access to the street behind them if that's what they wanted to do. But it really is a city council decision whether or not to do that. And without that, I don't think they do meet the development requirements. I am reluctant to recommend a lot split that cannot be built on in, in this case. Now, we have unbuildable lots. For example, there's POA property where there's a little sign or something up. Well, that's unbuildable. You know, the only thing you can put there is a sign, but that's a far different situation. What concerns me here is that when I was on the council when this was first proposed for development and they took down all the trees and saved the trees behind it, put them in a tree easement. So, we said, okay, that's where the better trees were anyway. There were trees in the front, but there are even better trees in the back. And so, we made a deal. That was the deal. What concerns me is that if a lot split is approved, then I think that begins to put in danger the tree easement that was behind it. If it's RMF 24, if it's on that up there, that concerns me with eventually the trees will just be sacrificed when that certainly was not the original intent. The only thing I have concerning the large-scale development is that it says tree preservation, existing canopy 6.7 percent, preserve canopy 3.6 percent, required 6.7, so they require mitigation trees. Well, if they didn't split the lot, they got plenty of trees, I think. I mean, I can't believe they don't have enough trees. I mean, maybe the urban forester can tell me, but, you know, that was, that was what we did there in the past. And if the, if no one can build on that lot because of the tree preservation, then that lot is not worth a bunch of money. It's only if somebody is anticipating that the tree preservation area will be vacated does that area become developable and worth money.
Right.
So, that, that's what concerns me is that we're, if we went through with a lot split, we would be implying that, yeah, that tree preservation area is going to be reduced.
So, then my question for you would be, since that exact thing is my concern as well, I'd love to hear your opinion on staff's opinion that we can just go ahead and process the LSD alone.
No, I, I, I think you can do that, certainly, because, you know, if it's one lot, then they can develop the developed part. They can redevelop the part that's already been done. I'm a little confused about the tree preservation because it seems like they wouldn't need to do any mitigation trees, but they certainly can develop as proposed and I don't have any problems with any of the recommendations the staff has made.
Can I add a recommendation against the lot split?
No, because it's really not, it's not for the planning commission to do that.
Not, not part of that item. That's fine. Okay. Well, I guess our hands are tied somewhat in that case, it seems like. Because I feel like the, in general, the, I'm fine with the, I'm fine with the large-scale by itself. I just don't like the idea of the trees being split off. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. Mr. Murphy, I guess you have something you'd like to add.
Yeah, just one quick comment. It's my understanding that when the purchase was done, that the original owner was under the understanding that he really wouldn't be able to do anything with that back lot. And I know that he then kind of had some people pursue the city about developing it, but the fact is the law doesn't allow it to be developable, developable, and he agreed with the purchase. So, it's kind of our position that he's just going to eat it, that he's just, that's his position that this is something that he wanted to sell the lot and so this was his deal to get three-quarters of it sold and he's going to just keep the back half the way that it is. And maybe down the, down the road, the vacate happens or doesn't or a driveway is allowed, but that's, you know, something for a future discussion.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
And then the calculations were done, not considering the easement, because we've been kind of under the assumption the lot split was going to happen. So, we wanted to make sure we were mitigated correctly with the lot split in the case.
No, I understand. I'm just saying if it's not split...
Then we were fine. We don't have to put any trees because we have plenty. Yeah, exactly. But that was my only comment. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You know, I, when, when I saw this, I was just baffled as to why, if there's something under a tree preservation area, why it could ever be split off unless, you know, I mean, it just seems like you, you preserved it for a reason and that probably didn't involve developing it and putting a driveway across it. So, you know, I, I guess that, that would be a matter for city council, though, so...
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Chesser.
Well, I, I wanted to have one response, which was if the situation were to go forward as the applicant just described, then that leaves a person owning a piece of essentially valueless property and there's no need for that person to then maintain that valueless property, which, you know, not for nothing, is right behind your restaurant. But I think that that is of the city's concern, that I don't think we want to encourage there to be unmaintained, valueless property. I think I suggested that the applicant, we need more parkland. It'd be a great park behind your restaurant. You can give it to the city, but if it's, I wouldn't normally suggest that because I don't expect people to give away things of value. But if we're agreeing that it's essentially valueless, that would solve it for me. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair. Commissioner Selby. If there are no more comments, I'd like to make a motion to approve LSD 16-5302 forward to the city council with staff's recommendations.
Second. We can just approve an LSD, right?
Yeah. You just make an approval. You approve it here.
Oh, okay. That we, it's not, yeah. Approve. Large-scale development 15-5302.
I still second.
Okay. We have a motion to approve LSD 16-5302 made by Commissioner Selby, a second made by Commissioner Autry. Mr. Garner, would you please call the roll?
Chesser.
Subject to my other comments, yes?
Bunch.
Yes.
Noble.
Yes.
Cook.
Yes.
Hoskins.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Autry.
Yes.
Hoffman.
Yes.
Selby.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Okay. Okay. Our next item is CUP 16-5315, conditional use for 3352 North Futural Drive and 3383 North Manor Court. Mr. Garner, would you please give us the staff report on this?
Yes, this property is two different sites. One is at 3352 Futural Drive and the other one is at 3383 Manor Court. Both of the properties are zoned residential office. They're developed with medical office buildings and parking lots. You can see here where the placemarkers are located. They're proposing two temporary units. One will be a mobile MRI unit and another one will be a mobile mammogram unit. In December of 2015, the breast center of Fayetteville had a fire and so during the reconstruction of that building, they need to have some temporary facilities installed in these two locations. And you can see in your packet, it's basically an 18-wheeler where the back trailer has been refurbished or converted into a medical office to have those kinds of services for their patients while they're finishing out their building. And so, we are recommending approval of the request. It would be temporary in nature and we have recommended conditions of approval. Condition of approval number one, we reckon, we had recommended a maximum of 12 weeks. Their letter initially said they felt like they could reconstruct the building in one to two months. And then after receiving additional emails from the applicant, they're requesting to have six months maximum. So, I'd recommend that you change condition number one to say maximum of six months. And other than that, I think it's a pretty straightforward request. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is the applicant present? Please state your name for the record and if you have anything to add to this.
My name's Jason Wilson. Just one clarification on what Mr. Garner said. On the mammography unit, we would like a six-month lifespan on it, but the MRI, we're, we probably need a lifespan of December 31st of this year on it before we can actually get back in our other building where the MRI that we have will be operational again. I don't have anything else.
Thank you very much. Is there any member of the public that would like to discuss this item? Seeing none, I close the floor to public comment and bring it back to the ladies and gentlemen of the commission.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Chesser.
I did note that also that's in his email that he'd asked for till 12:3116 on the MRI. Andrew, does that change your opinion?
No, I just overlooked that part. Thank you.
Okay. Just making sure. I'm, I think we need MRIs and mammograms. They had a fire. I'm totally in favor of this, so much so that even if there's discussion, I'm just going to go ahead and make a motion. If you want to change it, that's fine. I'm going to move that we approve CUP 16-5315 with staff conditions of approval, however, altering condition of approval number one to read, for, Shelby, the temporary MRI unit may be allowed until no later than 12:3116 and that the temporary mammography unit may be allowed no later than September 1st, 2016.
Second.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Hoffman.
I just, just wanted to add my quick comments here. I, I think that this is appropriate. It's obvious the building burned down. It's important that we maintain the, the level of service and, and it's clear that this is going to be a, a temporary condition. And I just want to further say that I, I think that where this is appropriate, you know, I'm, I'm, you know, I, I think that this is a very different situation from, for example, allowing a permanent trailer park on a prime buildable lot on, on North College and near downtown Fayetteville. That's all.
Was there a second?
Thank you. I had a motion to approve this item with a few changes by Commissioner Chesser and a second by Commissioner Selby. Mr. Garner, would you please call the roll?
Chesser.
Yes.
Bunch.
Yes.
Noble.
Yes.
Cook.
Yes.
Hoskins.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Autry.
Yes.
Hoffman.
Yes.
Selby.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Our next item is a rezone, 16-5299 rezone for 4170 West MLK Boulevard, Calypso Properties. Mr. Thompson, would you give us the staff report on that?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm just, I've been sitting here wondering how I should present this to you.
Uh-oh.
The property and the rezone that, that was requested was for a, was for a C1 zoning standard commercial zoning district from, from the RO residential office. There's a lot of history with this. I hope you've, you've seen that. This similar or same request has been made one, two, three times already and has been denied each time, essentially because it did not meet the goals of City Plan 2030 to build a traditional town form. And, and these zonings that have been requested, C2, C1, would each, in each way or each time, you know, encourage strip commercial development, which, which has been the, the reasoning and the commentary from the planning commission each time that this has been denied. And my recommendation tonight was also for the exact same reasons. I think our development patterns have only become stronger out there. We have CS to the, to the west. Those buildings are, are functioning quite well within, within that, that zoning district. We have UT and another, another form-based or traditional town form zoning district all around the site. So, you know, I have a, a strong denial for this C1 zone. I feel very strongly about it and our staff does. However, the applicant called me just before the meeting and said, how would, would it be possible to come tonight and request a, a different zoning of the planning commission? Said that it would. So, I, I believe that the applicant, Mr. Israel, may come, stand before you and ask for a UT zoning district on this. And I would like to say for all the reasons that staff would be recommending denial of a C1 rezone on this property, we would be in favor of rezoning that to UT if that is in fact going to be the request of the applicant. So, we feel like that's compatible and it's meeting the, the future land use map of City Plan 2030. So, if, I guess, if that is actually the case, I, I would say staff would, would recommend forwarding this with your approval.
Okay. Thank you very much. Is the applicant present?
I am Ben Israel. I live at 4477 West Wedge Drive in Fayetteville and I am representing Calypso Properties in trying to get this rezoning. And, you know, as you can see, the buildings that are going to be there for the next 40 years are there. They were built in 2006 and they are very nice, commercial, retail and office building. We have gotten a, a, a conditional use permit for a, for a larger retail shop... a conditional use permit for a, for a larger retail shop there at one time. And, but it takes a lot of effort and sometimes your potential tenant isn't willing to wait. They want to know today if they can lease this space or not. And you have to say, well, three months from now, we'll be able to tell you, or 60 days. But the buildings are already there and they will be there. As you know, the Rupel Road extension is 60 feet from this, from the back edge of this property. The extension of Rupel Road will come out 60 feet from the back, about 175 feet from the front. So we believe that the property should be zoned basically what the other property in the area is zoned. And north of this property and east of the property, it's all zoned urban thoroughfare, UT. And there are certain signage issues that we have also that more signage and different signage is allowed in UT than RO. And if you look at Martin Luther King, from Highway 71 business to the city limits, there are four small RO properties. One is by the side of Lowe's. One is across the street from Lowe's. One is the property that we're representing and the property directly across the street from that. Everything else is either C1, C2, I1, or it could even be some of these you've mentioned in that urban thoroughfare. So because of the fact that we need to be able to approach our clients, our tenants, and give them immediate response to whether they can lease this space or not, that's one reason we would like the rezoning. And the second is that we can improve our signage. This property drops down if you know it's about an eight-foot drop as you turn off into the area there. And so that's what we'd like to request is that zoning.
Okay, thank you.
That was my mistake for going for C1 in the first place. I shouldn't, I didn't realize why it was turned down before until I read the documents.
Thank you very much. Is there any member of the public that would like to discuss this item? There is none, so I bring it back to the commission.
Madam Chair.
I don't even know who that was.
Go ahead, Hoffman.
Commissioner Hoffman.
I'm just, I'm looking at the recommendation of denial on the C1. And I'm kind of, I'm reminded of an applicant that was in here a few months ago. I won't mention his name. But he was asking for C1, C2, C3, something like that. And brought up the question, well, if you're not just going to give me C2 or whatever it was, then why do we even have it? Why is it, why is it a zoning designation that we have? And I thought a lot about that when he asked that question and mostly because I can't answer it. I have no idea why we have C1, C2, C3. And I just wanted to point that out. Obviously, I'm going to support the urban thoroughfare here. I think that's a, I think it's appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Chesser.
Well, that raises a question. Commissioner, Andrew, I keep wanting to call you commissioner. Sorry. That's a demotion for you. I apologize. I would kind of ask that question too, except my assumption would be that there are certain things like car lots and things that you can only do in C1, C2. Can you do a car lot in UT?
You can. Urban thoroughfare does allow for transportation, trades, and services.
Well, is there any anticipation that we might phase out the non-form-based code at some point?
There is, I've heard various comments about certain, certain folks would like that to happen. I think, I mean, I don't think it's going to happen anytime in the immediate future. I mean, I think, you know, I mean, we have strong goals and policies in our City Plan 2030 for traditional town form. And so that's why you've seen staff recommend denial of quite a few C1, C2s, you know, over the recent years. You know, I don't think at this point, you know, that we're going to have the, the council and is going to be amenable just to removing those, I mean, from my conversations with folks.
Okay. Can you imagine yourself recommending approval of C1?
In certain settings, yes. I mean, I think, I think in certain, certain places.
Okay. That was what I'd kind of guessed. So there's a small percentage that still might need it. Madam Chair, I move that we forward rezone 16-5229 to the City Council to rezone to urban thoroughfare with a recommendation of approval. Second.
Okay. I have a motion to forward to City Council for recommendation for UT zoning made by Commissioner Chesser, a second made by Commissioner Hoffman. Mr. Garner, would you please call the roll?
Chesser?
I think that's Mr. Garner. Yes.
Bunch?
Yes.
Noble?
Yes.
Cook?
Oh, sorry.
Oskins?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Autry?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
The motion passes.
We'll be alone. Okay. Our next item is administrative item 165319, UDC chapters 166, gosh, 172, 177 amendments. Mr. Garner?
Yes, ma'am. Over the last couple of, it's been weeks or months, Alderman Matthew Petty discussed with city staff a desire to clarify some of our street tree and green space requirements for urban projects and referring to potentially changing something in the Unified Development Code. And after we met with him and then met internally with our urban forestry staff, we determined that in addition to the code change that Alderman Petty was desiring, we had several other cleanup items that we were hoping to bring forward as well. And so that's what this particular item is, is a proposal to change some of our landscape regulations, change some of our urban design requirements for form-based zoning districts. And so I will just hit these in your staff report and run through them. It's a fairly detailed list, but it'll probably take just a couple of minutes. So if you want to follow along, starting on page three of six, we have the changes shown in highlight and underline. And starting in chapter 177.04, this is our parking lot landscape standards. Subsection D1, side and rear property lines. We're proposing to allow an exception where parking lots are located adjacent to a public alley. Green space is not required between the parking lot and the alley. In addition, a shared driveway or a parking lot drive aisle within a platted access easement may encroach fully within the required green space along the side or rear property lines. Item number 2B is in urban zoning districts that prescribe urban building form, permitting front setbacks of less than 15 feet that may be permitted to eliminate the green space between the principal facade of a building and the master street plan right-of-way and instead provide pedestrian-oriented elements as referenced in subsection 166.24E. And skipping down the next section C, we've added, also clarified in there that two-family residential homes duplexes are exempted from the landscape chapter. And then the next section to D in non-residential zones, we've stricken kind of a redundant sentence there. Then going down to subsection G, our perimeter planting location, this is clarifying that street trees shall be installed in the location identified under the street tree planting standards. We do the same thing under the next subsection. And then further on, we'll clarify, if you scroll over to page four of six there, 177.05, our street tree planting standards, we've added a clarification. And this has been some confusion on where should street trees be planted. In some cases, we've had people planting them in the green space, right in front of their parking lots. In other cases, you have them planted between the curb and the sidewalk. And the general intent that we've always had in our master street plan and is just a part of the urban design philosophy is we want the street trees between the curb and the sidewalk. So you're shading the sidewalk, you're starting to frame the street. And so that's kind of what that sentence there is just clarifying. This is where you should plant your street trees. However, the urban forester has the discretion, if there's some utility conflicts, which does happen quite often between the curb and the sidewalk, they can put the street trees, require the developer to put the street trees in a different place, like the green space right in front of your parking lot where you do see them a lot of cases right in front of the parking lot. And then scrolling down to subsection three there, just kind of a clarification statement for optional street tree planting plans for urban streetscapes. And then if you want to scroll over to the next page, five of six, then go down to subsection D, "Development applications approved for the use of urban tree wells shall not be required to provide additional perimeter landscaped area between the master street plan right-of-way and the building as prescribed further under the perimeter landscaping requirements." And then subsection 172.04, the parking lot design standards. We've clarified here that in urban zoning districts that specify urban form, the intent is for drive-through lanes, parking lot drive aisles, and parking spaces to be located to the side or rear of buildings. In urban zoning districts, a drive-through lane, parking lot drive aisles, or parking spaces are not permitted to be located in the front yard directly between the building and the master street plan right-of-way. And again, this is just a clarification statement. The code has been interpreted that way, but it wasn't really clear that you couldn't have a parking lot right in front of your building in urban zoning districts. So we felt we needed some clarification.
What about if you're on a corner lot?
In this, in the same scenario, in a corner lot, if you have the building, the building, the parking lot be right in front of the building and the street.
Either street.
Correct. I mean, it can be on one side of the building. You know, the parking lot will probably be to the side of the building. But directly between the facade of the building and the street, if you're building in the build-two zone, the intent is not to have the parking lot.
Or a drive-through lane.
Right, right in front. We do have separate standards for gas stations and drive-through restaurants and things like that. And it's another subsection, they kind of have their own separate design requirements that allow them to develop. And we feel like we've, we've added in a lot of flexibility for those kinds of developments because
Is that the Dunkin' Donuts situation and the Freddy's Fast Burger zone in Huntington?
Right. So you'll see Dunkin' Donuts, you've seen the drive-through lane kind of wraps around the back and to the side. And also like the Old Time Donuts just out next to the Calypso Properties, they developed in a community services zoning where the building is a little closer to the street, the parking is to the side. And so we're just clarifying that kind of what they did is what we're really going to be, you know, enforcing.
But Freddy's and Dunkin' Donuts, I thought they had their driveline in front of the building.
Yeah, Freddy's is not in a form-based zoning district. They're in a PZD, the Forest Hills. So they were not subject to any of that.
Okay. All right.
And then I think the, the last subsection that we clarified was in our non-residential design standards, yes, subsection 166.24, there's a couple of clarifications there regarding the definition of the type of public open space allows for public or semi-private space to create that pedestrian realm between the building and the street. Right now, it currently reads it's, it has to be public open space, but there should, we wanted to put in some flexibility there. And then the next subsection, it's defining some of the architectural features. You have to put in a form-based zoning district when you have a really, a longer building. You have to start adding in some pedestrian-oriented elements like benches or planters and some other interesting things at the street. And we've added a little more flexibility. Instead of having three of these elements, you only have to have two. And I believe that is everything we had. And I see Alderman Petty here. If he wants to say anything, of course, you can speak, speak up. And I think that's all we had. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you.
I assume we're going to table this tonight?
Pardon me?
I assume we're going to table this tonight? Give us time to adjust it further?
I don't know.
Oh, what I'm asking.
Is there any member of the public that would like to discuss this item? Mr. Petty, do you have anything to add? I guess you're public. I don't know.
Oh, thank you. I'm Alderman Matthew Petty. I would ask for your permission, if there's extended discussion, to respond as a submitter with staff. But I don't have anything to add. I would ask that unless you have major concerns that you can't resolve tonight, that you go ahead and forward it. I think it's a very simple change, although it did have some implications in other sections of the code that may make it seem a little more complicated than it is. Basically, all we're doing is clarifying that you don't have to put a building all the way up to the zero lot line. And if you decide not to do that, you don't have to have green space between the building and the property line. The code, as it was previously written, would do things like make the development, the replication of West Dixon Street illegal, which has buildings right up against the property line and no green space between the buildings and the property line. And so I think this is a very common sense clarification that lets infill development occur in the way it's meant to.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments from staff on this? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commissioners.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Chesser.
The first thing I want to say is just that, one thing I, I brag on staff a great deal. I don't, unfortunately, I don't work in the city of Fayetteville. And I, I frequently brag on Fayetteville planning staff to, to other city people. I would probably fight over a claim that we have the best planning staff in the state. One of the things that I admire about you is that in my tenure, which is almost over, thankfully for everyone else present, in my tenure as a planning commissioner, I have seen many occasions in which staff, and in some cases driven by Alderman, and in some cases driven internally, has gone through their own code and made changes as necessary to meet a changing environment. And I personally strongly believe that it is necessary to make alteration to codes and laws as things change over time. And so I want to particularly compliment staff on their sort of continued improvement of, and clarification of code. It just has, it seems to always be an occurrence. And I very much appreciate that because without that, things get stagnant. I, I actually don't necessarily see a reason to table this. I feel like it's fairly straightforward and I think it makes sense from an urban development standpoint. I'm not, you know, I guess horribly opposed to it if it's, if it was really necessary for other members of the commission to feel comfortable with it. But I feel like, especially given that Mr. Garner went through them all, I would be totally comfortable voting for this. I will, however, refrain from making a motion at this point so that further discussion can ensue. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Brown.
I also would like to applaud the staff and their efforts to keep our regulations up to date and responsive to our needs. I have, I'm a little confused though about some of the sections. And I had some questions to make sure mainly that I understand what's trying to be done here. In the, under 177.04, section D, subsection 1, I was thinking, what do we want to do in a situation where we have residential properties abutting, alleyways, or commercial uses? Wouldn't we want to maintain a green strip as a buffer in those instances and not eliminate the, the green strip?
In my opinion, no, and we have not, I don't believe we've really enforced the code that way. And so this is really kind of clarifying, I believe, the way that we have been enforcing the landscape code. It may have been a little bit inconsistent and I'll let, I see the urban foresters here, so they, they may, you can also ask them as well. Derek and John are here as well. But the main intent, if you're thinking about an alley, the alley is back of house. This is where you want to hide. You know, you want cars to be back there. You want parking. You want trash cans. And so this is not a place where you're trying to buffer anything from anything. It's really, that's where the things that you don't want to see in the public realm go back there. So that's where you may have a scenario where you have a paved area all the way from the alley all the way to the back of the house or the business for a trash truck to pull in and get a dumpster or for cars to pull in head in off of the alley. And so that's why, and I've, in some cases, there's been some confusion that, oh, you you need to have this green buffer strip right along the alley. Well, it doesn't work well for cars turning in and off of it and things like that. It's really tight back there usually anyway.
Yeah. Oh, I, I wouldn't, I'm not proposing to, to, uh, change the wording other than create an exception where you do have a residential use that's on the other side of the alley. Uh, it just provides additional buffer, uh, for the intensive activity on the commercial side of the alley. You know, you can still have the, uh, i, it's just, it's just a consideration. Uh, and then, if you have a residential area that, that, uh, isn't on an alley but adjoins, butts the actual commercial area, do you want to allow, di, wouldn't you want a green space there and not have a, uh, a, have a, uh, an internal, uh, driving aisle that goes over to the edge of the commercial property? Excuse me, edge of the residential property?
Yeah, I mean, uh, I think when you're talking about alley situations, you're usually dealing with compact, more urban environments, and so, in order to do that, you, you really need to be able to maximize, especially in the back, the access and the amount of area where you can turn in vehicles. Um, I think the buffering tends to happen on, between the side property lines. Um, in an alley situation, just the separation from the building across the alley to another building, I think is probably enough separation, in my opinion.
Isn't it the way this reads that, uh, in the internal circulation of the parking lot, you're wanting to allow lanes to go all the way over to the edge of the property? And I, and if you have, if you have a residential use that shares that edge, you know, you're losing that buffer.
Correct. I think, yeah, so in a, yeah, you know...
So, I'm not saying eliminate, you know, you can, in most instances, do it, but if you have an exception, and that exception might be a residential use.
And, uh, may I? Actually, I don't, I don't think that's a correct reading. Um, the last sentence here, uh, is talking about access easements, and in most cases where we have an access easement, uh, it's not going to be in existence next to an alley. Usually, if we have an alley, uh, it is fulfilling the role of an access easement, so you wouldn't see that kinda access doubled up. If you did, I think it'd be an extreme edge case.
Well, I'm just trying to understand it.
Sure. And, you know, with regards to your concern about, um, uh, maybe noxious experiences relative to commercial and residential proximity, I think the alley itself provides that separation that you're looking for. And I really think it's a mistake, uh, if we wanna discuss, you know, the theory of how this might apply to require a landscape buffer next to an alley, if only for the fact that, um, that then cascades into a bunch of other regulations we'd have to talk about. For instance, uh, how do we control access to the alley, and what does landscape buffer have to look like? What kinda curb returns do we need to have? Throat length, et cetera, et cetera. Alley simply work better whenever they're as flexible as they can possibly be.
Okay. Madam Chair.
I was still...
Well, I wanted to comment something to Commissioner Brown, perhaps, on this particular item, if that was okay.
Fine.
Um, one thing I've, within listening to you, I was wondering, um, you recognize that the green space isn't required, but it's still optional. Did you catch that part?
I didn't catch that part.
When you were speaking of an exception, um, I think it would be, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it would be legal under this item to put in a green space on the side that you're talking about if, uh, the person building that designed it to. Um, it's not required that it, it be eliminated. Is that, is, I, I thought that's what I heard you say, but I may have been a misunderstanding, I'm sorry. And I apologize for interrupting.
Okay, let's see. Uh, on, uh, s, under property lines adjoining street right-of-way, uh, subsection C, uh, I'm, w, can you explain that to me, that, what you're, uh, you're, you're eliminating two-family? But you're keeping, you're keeping the single-family but eliminating two-family?
No, we're just clarifying in that section of the code that single-family and two-family are exempt from requiring to submit a full landscape plan and require that fifteen feet of green space. Um, so, like, in another earlier section of this landscape chapter, it exempts single and two-family from having to do a landscape plan. However, this is a section here that talks about requiring a fifteen-foot green space buffer, and we just wanted to clarify that you do not have to have a fifteen-foot green space buffer between a duplex and the street.
Uh, maybe, uh, we could table this, and I could talk to the planning staff, uh, to make sure that I understand these.
It is entirely up to you if you want to make...
A motion?
A motion to table it, I suppose?
Okay.
With the course of action.
Uh, oh. If I could make a motion to table this...
However, before you make that motion, Commissioner Autry was, uh...
Well, I was going to make a motion, and we, uh, recommend this and forward it to the city council, so...
Okay, so, I guess if you wanna make a motion to table it, then we can, uh...
Vote on that.
Vote on that, and then if not, we'll vote on, um...
Uh, if we could just table this, um, I'd like to make a motion to table this, uh, to allow us to better understand the recommenda, the recommend, recommended changes. I don't have any problem with the changes, uh, I just wanna make sure I understand them before I, you know, approve them, that's all.
Okay.
If I could, and if I could talk to, uh, staff about that, then, and not keep everyone here.
So, we have a motion?
As I can't underst, can't see any reason why this is a dire emergency to get it pushed through, I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion to table, made by Commissioner Brown, and a second by, by Commissioner Hoffman.
Madam Chair.
Hoffman, excuse me, Hoskins. Yes?
Can I ask for a clarification table until next meeting, I'm assuming?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, we have a motion made by Commissioner Brown, a second by Commissioner Hoskins. Mr. Garner, would you, uh, please call the roll?
Chesser?
Yes.
Butch?
No.
Noble?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Autry?
No.
Hoffman?
No.
Selby?
No.
Uh, motion passes, five to four, and we'll see it next meeting.
Okay, thank you. That is our last item tonight, I believe. Yep. Last item. So, uh, to Andrew, before we close, do we have any, uh, any subdivision or anything like that?
We do have a subdivision committee meeting, um...
Me, Tracy, Ryan.
Alright.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
I was gonna say, since we're talking about the trees...
You're on the record.
You're on the record.
That's fine, you really shouldn't be talking unless you're on the record, we're not adjourned yet.
Oh.
So, go ahead and talk.
Okay. I was just curious on, who made the decisions on the species that are planted between the road, the curb and the sidewalk? Who makes the decision on the species of the trees?
Um, our, our urban foresters do, they, we have a, you might, one of you guys wanna come and talk about street tree species?
Was a, hi there, was a specific streetscape mentioned or just in general?
No, uh, well, it, it could be in general, but my issue deals directly with me every morning when I'm trying to pull out of my driveway. Uh, we have these beautiful trees, they look like toll, you know, they've got lace of some sort, but they grow shorter and they grow big and round. Believe it or not, it will hide a complete car. So, when you're pulling out of your driveway and these trees are right there, you can't see to get out of your driveway. So, wouldn't it be better to always make sure that every tree planted grew slim and tall before it bushed out, or do you, do you monitor that? Do you care? I mean, what?
We certainly care, and we, we look at those standards of, um, minimum visibility requirements at intersections. If you have a unique case, we'd be happy to take a look at it, and we, we do, uh, every once in a while receive a, receive a call like that.
Mm-hmm.
What we're looking at, or what, what's kinda at play here is that most trees, when they're young and they're establishment age, they, they're often in, in that shape, and then as they mature, um, they get such that we can start pruning the lower limbs. There's a, there's a little bit of a, a time there to where it can be a little bit difficult, difficult in some situations, um, but we can certainly look at...
Do you think you could co, um, take a, a drive out, possibly Mount Comfort, and look at, and then they're beautiful, don't get me wrong, but boy, they're not growing taller, they're just getting bigger around, right at the height they've always been. So, they're more difficult, almost every spring, to, to come out of your driveway. I've had lots of neighbors not bring it to a, a planning person, but just amongst themselves talk about how difficult it is. Not every tree on there, just the people who have the big, beautiful purple ball trees.
Let us know if there's an address or intersection in particular, we'll be happy to make a site visit to, to take a look at it.
I'll, I'll give you her address.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you very much, we're adjourned.